Motion made by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Brennan.
Yes, I'd like to second that.
Thank you so much. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the states of America and to the republic.
...of governance accordance that allows city council and the city's authorities, boards, commissions to hold electronic meetings in appropriate situations so long as alternative arrangements are made for public access to such meetings. This special electronic participation meeting is an electronic meeting with the specific purpose to address two items directly related to COVID-19. That is the only business that we will conduct today. We are using Zoom and an audio and video recording is being made of the meeting and will be available on the Lynchburg City School website. Notice of this meeting was given yesterday in accordance with school board policy BDB on special board meetings wherein this school board holds special and continued meetings when necessary. Those special meetings are held when called by the chair, as in this instance, or when requested by two or more members. Special meetings may be called provided each member is duly notified or a reasonable attempt has been made to notify each member. Business that does not come within the purposes set forth for the call of the meeting is not transacted at any special meeting of the school board unless the members present unanimously agree to consider additional items of business. Notice, reasonable under the circumstances of special or continued meetings is given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the school board. There will be no public comments today and board members shall identify themselves prior to speaking. All votes will be by roll call through our clerk and recorded in the minutes. Should any school board member arrive late or leave the meeting, they will need to verbally note their attendance. We have two items on the agenda today in what will be section C. One, return to learn discussion. See two, return to learn shift to remote learning. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, are there any questions about the process for today? Hearing none, the chair, B1, would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda for our special school board meeting December the fourteenth, two thousand twenty.
A move that we approve the agenda. This is Sharon.
Motion made by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Brennan.
Yes, I'd like to second that.
Thank you so much. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Whether we're supposed to or not, we're going to pause and say the pledge of allegiance and then we're going to move right on with what we're supposed to do for this important meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the states of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. All right, thank you so much for that, and we will now recognize that today's meeting has been called in light of the spike in local COVID numbers due to community spread and its impact on Lynchburg City Schools' human resource capacity. I am now going to turn the floor over to Dr. Edwards, our superintendent, for the return to learn discussion. Dr. Edwards?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, and I will ask that as my staff speak and address during this quick discussion and update that they identify themselves as well so that we have it for the record. I am going to share my screen if that is okay, and it looks like it is allowable, and I will also, for those of you who cannot see my screen, go over what is on the screen. So the first thing I would like to do is just reiterate what Dr. Coleman said is that we are here because of the impact of COVID-19 in our community and in our schools. And sometime last week, we had issued for the public a Loom video which outlined some of the metrics that we use as we make decisions about learning and remote learning, phase two, and in-person learning, hybrid learning, phase three. And I have on the screen what our current status is in Lynchburg City Schools, and I have a balance that shows that we are always looking at the best mitigation strategies to address educational learning and taking in consideration all that we know about the way children learn, the setting for which children learn, the effect of both hybrid in-person and remote learning on children. Those considerations are always at the table as we make decisions about children in the educational learning. In addition, children's social emotional health is also at the forefront of any decisions that we've made, which is why we, you know, push to go back to some form of in-person learning to connect our kids with teachers and staff, and those same metrics would apply for staff as well. But on the other side of the balance, we are also trying to find the best mitigation strategies to address this public health crisis, which is in our community, and it affects our schools. And we have, from the very beginning, before it was required, put in a mandate to wear masks for all staff and students. We've been practicing social distancing. We have outfitted our buildings with hand sanitizer and encouraged hand washing and put in all the mitigation strategies to address the public health crises as we continue to address the educational needs of our students. And even with our strategies, we come to a point where some of our metrics are, that are in the community, are finding their ways into the school, and I must reiterate that we are not seeing high school, in-school transfer of COVID-19. However, we are being impacted in schools. So I just want to share with you, I'm scrolling through the document, the current numbers, and this is something that I talked about in the Loom video that I constantly update, and here are some of the metrics. I'm going to scroll down to where we are today, just so you can see a little bit. And if I just look at the last couple days, if we just go to last week, December seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh, and then I plugged in the numbers for today, you can see that on December seventh, in LCS, we had two positive cases, the eighth, we had six, the ninth, we had four, the tenth, one, the eleventh, three, and as it stands right now, we are at six cases with, you know, at our twelve o'clock deadline, but I know that we are still investigating some other positive cases. In addition, the second column or the third column is our five-day average. It is not a consecutive day, it is a reporting day, and you can see that we have moved from last week on December seventh to having a five-day average of about 1.6 positive cases here in Lynchburg City Schools per day, to today, we are now at a 4.0 positive cases here in Lynchburg City Schools. So if you recall, I talk a little bit about the cases in our school, and I compare that to the metrics that are outside of our school, just to make sure that we're making the best decisions using all of that data. I also have the current data for what's occurring in Lynchburg City Schools based on the VDH website, and you can see that the fourth column over, seven hundred eighty-seven point nine cases per hundred thousand. The next column is a positivity rate of fifteen point zero, and then the last column is the seven-day average change from the previous seven-day average, and we can see that we are seeing sixty-five point two percent change in that. And all of that, as we just look at those metrics, they are all increasing here, both in Lynchburg City Schools and in the community. And what the other two metrics that we talked about are staff absenteeism due to positive cases and quarantine cases and student absenteeism. Sometime last week, I had to share with you that we needed to shift to remote learning for Heritage Elementary School, and again, the community numbers were pretty high in all of those areas, but one of the major factors was our ability to safely supervise our children when we have a high staff that was either positive or, more importantly, quarantined. And we are there again. So the reason for this special meeting is we are at staff critical one more time in terms of looking at our ability to safely transport and safely supervise our children. So what I would like to do is turn it over to Director Brown to talk a little bit about, while you're seeing six positive cases for today, the impact that that has on quarantine and what we're seeing in staffing. So, Director Brown?
Good afternoon, Board. What we're seeing is, say, for example, today, we have six positive cases, and within that six positive cases, we have an additional thirty quarantines, and that's inclusive of students and staff. And the impact throughout the division, we have to look at how does it impact instruction? How does it impact transportation? And can the school operate safely as we're having staff or students to either be remote learning or telework? The biggest impact comes from staff, and when staff is quarantined and being able to run the building safely and provide adequate instruction. So as we're seeing our trend kind of increase with positive cases, and we're working and doing countless hours for contact tracing, contact tracing could stem for one person being positive, but then we have to break it down to social distancing, how far apart they've been from their colleagues, whether or not they were wearing masks, and then also timeframes, how long they had been around staff, students, or other LCS personnel that's been in the building. And to do that contact tracing, it can take anywhere from a simple case being ten minutes to a whole classroom or monitoring a whole school that could take up a day or a day and a half just to investigate the case. And so when we're looking at quarantining staff or students, know that we do our due diligence with reviewing information that is entered in a database at each school by their nurses. So the nurses are taking time to ask pre-screening questions to see whether or not that stu-, I mean, the staff or student has been exposed to COVID as a direct contact, has tested positive for COVID, or are having symptoms of COVID. From there, the central office team picks up and do a deeper dive and investigate more in terms of the symptoms, the contacts, and the amount of time of exposure so that we know how far to go in contacting tracing with other staff to ensure that we are lessening and decreasing the spread or exposure throughout Lynchburg City Schools in order to keep our doors open and staff as safe as possible.
Thank you, Director Brown. So with that lead-in, I'd like to ask Mr. Gatske and Mr. A. to tell us a little bit about the current situation in our transportation department.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This is Steve Gatske, Senior Director for Finance and Operations. Our current situation in the transportation department is that COVID has, COVID issues have affected six out of seven of this office staff in transportation. That's dispatchers, secretaries, bookkeeper, and the director, so that we currently only have one person in the office to handle all the transportation issues, and that is just not adequate to properly support the bus drivers out in the, out on the, in the field. This is critical for us. The bus drivers require extensive support when the buses are out on the streets, and there's no one in the office to handle that, except for one person, and one person cannot do that job by herself. So that's where we're at right now.
So in addition to that, the positive and quarantine cases that we have experienced in transportation, I would be remiss if I did not say that we also experienced loss of a staff member in the transportation department, and that loss is hitting all of us very hard, and we, we are surrounding the family with love and care, but if you can imagine at a time like this that our transportation staff is also deeply grieving, and this is just a very trying, trying time for all of us. We did meet with transportation this morning, and we did provide some outside grief counselors to assist us with that, and I do want us to take pause to say right now that, and if I go back to the balance of balancing the educational needs of all of our staff and just, I'm sorry, of all of our students, and just the needs of the people who wrap their arms around and provide the love and support for our students, whether that's feeding them or transporting them or teaching them or serving them, we need to do our due diligence to make sure that we can adequately staff and meet the needs of our students and support them at a time like now. So we've been monitoring our numbers. It is not an easy decision or an easy recommendation when you think through our educational mission and, and they need to educate kids and make sure that we're meeting their needs, but at this time, it is my recommendation that we shift for the remainder of this week, and I do want to be clear because we have an immediate need right now, and then we have a more pressing need that as we look at the community spread of COVID that we can discuss at a, at the later board meeting, but for right now, I am making the recommendation that for the rest of this week that we shift from phase three hybrid instruction for students to phase two remote learning for all students for the remainder of this week. And I'm going to let a couple more folks talk a little bit about what services and what needs, what that means in terms of instruction, what that means in terms of services provided from the Department of Special Education, and what that means in terms of our ability to make sure that students still receive the nutritious meals. So I am going to turn it over to the instructional team to just give a quick update of what that means.
Good afternoon, Board. Allison Jordan, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Returning to phase two remote learning would be the familiar instructional delivery models that we saw in August, so a seesaw for our youngest learners and Google Classroom for our students in grades three through twelve. Students would keep their teachers that they have right now, so it would mean that students would keep the exact same teacher that they had in the hybrid model, so it would be a shift in how we're delivering it, but not a shift in who is delivering it.
Janine?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Janine Daniels, Vice Director of Special Education. For our special ed students, we were able to provide devices for them, for our functional students, as well as many of our grades three through twelve special education students, so they do have devices within the home. Individual testing of students, our timelines from the Department of Ed and the federal government are not going to be waived, so we will work with staff to do what we did as school started on August twenty-fourth. We were able to test students individual, one-on-one, with safety and mitigation strategies in effect for each of those students. So we'll be able to continue that on limited basis within each building so that that continues forward for all of our students.
And Ms. Morris, do you want to talk a little bit about school nutrition?
Yes, we do have curbside service today at five of our, our five secondary schools as we have been providing, and we will continue meal service on Wednesday and again on Friday. Each of those days, we will provide two days' worth of meals, so Wednesday's distribution will cover Wednesday and Thursday, and Friday, Friday's distribution will cover Friday and Saturday. In addition to that, we are pleased that our community partners, Food for Thought and the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank, will be providing boxes of fresh produce and shelf-stable food items both of those days to help, excuse me, to help subsidize and the items that we are providing. So we will continue service for pickup this, the rest of the week.
Thank you. And Director Collins, can you give us an update on MiFi's for students who may not have access to internet?
Sure. We, we just received seven hundred and fifty MiFi devices via the T-Mobile Project Ten Million, and the first batch of about a hundred and fifty has been distributed. We have another three hundred ready to go. We were originally planning on distributing through the schools, and it seems like that may still be what we do. We're going to get those out to schools starting tomorrow so that additional students who have needs can get it. It is limited, one per household at this time, but we're looking into other options to see if we need to be on the seven hundred and fifty.
Thank you, thank you. And I'd just like to reiterate that this is not an easy decision or easy recommendation to make on my part. I'm really concerned about the education of our students, as is my staff, very concerned about the status of COVID in our community as well, and, you know, I want to thank this team of people for working tirelessly over the weekend, and they continue to do so to try to make the best decisions that we can with the information that we have in front of us, and we continue to monitor this. So at this point, I'd like to turn it to Dr. Coleman so that we may answer any questions that board members may have before going to the next part.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards and staff, for clearly, concisely, and coherently helping us to appreciate the matter before us. If the board would not mind, for this discussion, I would just like to call on each board member to facilitate this, this electronic experience as discussion, questions, or whatever you may have, and after that is concluded, then we can move to C2 and allow you to know the options that we have as far as voting for today. I would like to start with School Board Member Harvey. Any questions or discussion that you have, sir?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. This is Gary Harvey. I, I'm assuming that the issue before us is simply an emergency concern, and it's, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, it's dealing only with this week. So my question would be, would we, as a board, be taking this up for further discussion at tomorrow night's meeting on the, the long-term considerations that, that obviously need to be made regarding our, our system and how we're operating, not only up to the, to the holiday break, but, but possibly beyond? So I, I just, that's a clarification question that I would need to have.
Dr. Edwards, I can answer that. School Board Member Harvey, what we would do when we get to the second portion of this is today we have, obviously, a couple of options. One would be not to support the recommendation and keep the current hybrid model intact of phase three, or if we decide to accept the recommendation to go to phase two, we can do that up until June, January the fourth, and then on tomorrow, we would have further discussion to kind of see what we want to do beyond that point, or we can wait until January the fourth and prepare to have another special meeting to determine our position with further input from what has transpired during the break. So tomorrow, we can have a more lengthy discussion, but we've got tomorrow, we've got this week that we need to decide today, and tomorrow, we can either make determinations on going beyond January the fourth or on January the fourth, having another special meeting to make decisions at this time. Florence, still, your further questions or?
Okay, so, so I just wanted to make sure that in our considerations for this, that, that we are doing our due diligence to, to, to methodically plan this out. I, I want to be very cautious that we are making a plan and making a decision weeks at a time or week at a time. I would rather us be making a decision for a holistic plan moving forward so we're not having to, to revisit this over and over again and, and leave not only our staff, but also our, our parents in limbo as to what the decision with returning in person might be for an extended period of time.
Point well taken, sir. All right, Dr. Gupta?
Let me start by saying I'm heartbroken by loss of our LCS family member. You know, one life is too many to lose. So I agree with Dr. Edwards, something needs to be done now because of this contact tracing, you may have end up in a situation like she was at Heritage Elementary School, where the staffing of these buildings, transportation of her kids, may become a difficult venture going forward. But again, listening to Mr. Harvey, the other issue is we need a plan. As a parent, they will like to see what is going to happen a week out, two weeks out, and three weeks out. So day-to-day watch is not good for our teachers and as well as parents, so like to see a, sort of a long-term plan, but maybe four weeks, you know, four, five weeks in time so that parents can plan out, because it will put a lot of difficulty on a lot of parents right now. So the planning going forward in this recommendation will be helpful.
Thank you, Doc. Dr. Senna?
This is Dr. Senna. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. My questions were very similar to what Mr. Harvey expressed, and so I would just like to see us modify our agenda for tomorrow's work session to discuss these things in more detail and give us, as board members, more time to assess the situation for ourselves, take in to consideration some of the governor's recommendations that he forwarded last week, and also those expressed by Virginia Department of Education. So very fortunately, we do have a, a meeting tomorrow, and that'll give us an opportunity to discuss that in detail. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Senna. Point well taken. Dr. Nellis? And he may have to text us, so we, we'll come back if he interrupts, he can.
Can I call him on his office line, see if I can get him over the phone?
Certainly, Dr. Gupta, glad to come back. Board member, school board member Evans?
Okay, I don't know if you could, the way my phone is funny, I think you can hear me, but you can't see me.
Yeah, we can hear you and see you.
Okay, okay. I, I want to, I, I agree with everything Dr. Edwards has said, but I want to make one point very clear, that the employees at Lynchburg City Schools, and I mean all employees, doesn't matter who it is, have gone above and beyond to follow the standards we had, have put in place to stop the spread within schools, and we have done so, and I think that honestly, they've been amazing at doing it, but when you have a community spread of fifteen percent, schools are not in isolation. We cannot do this alone, and I know how hard And I know how hard this is on parents, but we can't do it by ourselves. This has to be a community group. Education has to be put first and we have to remember that as a community and come together and get our community spread down if we want to get our children back in the buildings. To me, it's as simple as that. And every staff member of Lynchburg has done nothing but work tirelessly to keep our children safe. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much, School Board Member Evans. Before we move on to Ms. Morrison, I want to digress for just a moment. Dr. Nillis has put in the chat the following. Okay, if you got him so he can be heard via the phone, he can go ahead through there. Dr. Nillis?
All right. How does this sound?
Could you hear him? He's asking.
Yes, yes, we can.
First of all, I wanted to offer my personal condolences to the family along with the transportation staff. I know everyone in that group and everyone in the division really wants what's best for the students and this is a roadblock, so very sad situation. So, my question in regards to transportation is, I guess I'm concerned that we're not working to add support into the transportation office as we see staff get quarantined or called out that, you know, just letting our staff get trimmed down and we're not really responding.
May I address that, please?
Please, please, you may, Dr. Edwards.
So, I certainly agree with what you're saying, Dr. Nillis, but I think the understanding has to be that these COVID cases are coming rapidly right behind each other. So, they're not giving us enough time to rebuild and find substitutes. If you talk to any of our, even our teaching staff, will say that finding substitutes right now to get people to come in and do the jobs is very difficult. And even in other areas, you know, we're talking about transportation because of the direct connection to children, but in other areas, we are also seeing, I mean, even in my office, 60% of my office is quarantined right now. We can function a little bit better because there's no direct service to children or direct supervision of children. But when they're coming as quickly as they're coming and we're trying to, you know, find out what's going on and replace people and find suitable trained people who understand how to operate the transportation software and all of that, it is very challenging right now and they're not happening one at a time. And then the added parts of quarantine is just making it difficult. But I certainly understand your concern and I would like nothing more than to have a deep bank of capacity waiting. I mean, I don't have a deep bank of capacity waiting to take the place of my teaching staff, my nursing staff, my transportation staff, my food service staff, my counseling staff. We just, we just don't have the depth of people and substitutes to come in and do that. And some of these jobs, you can't have, you can't cross-train that quickly to get someone else in there to do that responsibility.
Do we have a sense of where we are in capacity of staff in the state of major areas? Like, are we down to 60% of transportation and 70% of destruction or just some rough numbers?
So, it varies across different buildings and different departments, even within a building. And I, you know, I probably should have said this first because we, many people are probably wondering, why are you having a meeting on Monday when you're having a meeting on Tuesday? Well, the kids were due to be picked up tomorrow by transportation. And with our current, our current staff absenteeism in transportation and also, we do know that we have staff that are grieving, we don't have enough staff to safely transport the students and pick them up and get them all to school in a timely, safe, and supervised manner. And we certainly did not want to risk doing any of that. So, that is the reason for having an emergency special meeting right now on a Monday to decide the rest of the week. And I agree with what everyone else said, we do need a more thoughtful conversation, which we have a return to learn already scheduled in our tomorrow night meeting, but the recent events and the COVID, and I think we're seeing the upticks of Thanksgiving right now, just hitting and converging all on top of us right now.
My last question then is, can we look at trying to keep the K33 and the DLL students, students with disabilities, you know, particularly vulnerable students, and what we look to consider keeping them at school? Would that help in terms of transportation burden as well as instructional burden?
So, we did try to look at different options, but recognizing that time is not in our favor. And I think we learned a very valuable lesson from the last rollout of transportation where we tried to manage it as close to the deadline as possible and then try to communicate to families that you're no longer at this bus stop, you're at this bus stop, you're being picked up by this bus number, not this bus number. And quite honestly, with just everything that has happened from Friday to today, it just was not enough time to safely say, I'm pretty sure that I can pick up all of the kids at the right spots at the right time on the right bus and get them to school safely. And that's why we're having, or one of the reasons why we're having this emergency meeting. But your, again, your point is well taken that we do have some contingency plans around, you know, various other models.
Thank you, Dr. Nillis, for those questions. All of this is valuable and necessary discussion. Ms. Morrison?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. My colleagues have pretty much covered what I intended to say. I do want to express my sincere sympathy to the family of our LCS employee. Like we said, one is one too many. I also want to express my sincere appreciation to all the staff and the remarkable job that they are doing beyond their contracts. This is not what they have to do, but what they want to do, and we're so appreciative. I do very much think that we need a long-term plan. We know that we had a spike after Thanksgiving. We can anticipate a spike after the holiday season coming in January, and I think we need to look at that. I do have my one question. Will teachers still report to the building like they did in August, or will they be able to work remotely?
Dr. Edwards?
Yes, I was finding my mute button, I'm sorry. At this point, for the remainder of this week, we are shifting back to Phase 2 where we did have teachers and staff, I should say, staff, report to the building. We understand that we have some of the same concerns with families and medication and just getting everything that you may need to be, to have instruction. I do want to reiterate, though, that we need to make sure that we, as we did in August when we first went remote and had staff come back, that we continue to wear those masks, practice social distancing. And again, looking forward to a more detailed conversation about future plans, but just to manage through, how do we make it through the rest of this week and safely manage expectations? So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Dr. Carter?
I just would like to send my condolences to the family of the individual that passed and just also to everyone that has been dealing with the recovery or having a diagnosis of having COVID-19 because that's, they're coming in to do a job. And it was great that we see that it wasn't from in-school transmission, but primarily community transmission. And then when we see the different groups around that are talking about defying the mask ordinance or not wearing face covering, it really is sad. But I would also like to just say, as Mrs. Evans said, I've really seen in the schools that I'm brown and live near, that the teachers or the staff have been very diligent. They're actually wearing them to their cars in the parking lots. So, I think everyone has really gone above and beyond and we really are practicing the mitigation interventions there. And I've gone to Dunbar Middle and I've seen the children as they walked by the hand sanitizer and stain apart. So, trying to do that. And some of the questions have already been asked, especially, but what we're looking at this week, we're actually looking at the days before our winter break. So, it's looking at two days of instructions for Cohort A and B. And the other thing is the transportation, I think that would be a major problem at this time, especially with the, just the grieving and also with the staffing issues. And I wonder, do we look at some of the staff that have maybe worked in transportation? Then maybe they can be, go there again to try to help out, but I know there will take, there will be holes in other places. And this is not an easy thing, but as some others have said, I think we really do need to look at long-term so that parents can plan for the types of childcare that they need or to make sure that people are in place. And I don't think, and we're looking at January the 4th, that we may need to look at another date because that'll be right during the time that we'll see the spike from Christmas or from the holidays, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, whatever you're celebrating, and also the New Year's spike. So, I think that we have been really methodical and just being, trying to do long-term planning. I would like to see that continue for this time.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Thank you, Dr. Carter. Vice Chair, Dr. Brennan?
This is Robert Brennan, a board member, and my fellow members of the board have stated everything so well. I will be very brief. I would also like to extend my sympathies and prayers to the family and the friends of the well-loved bus driver who passed away. I'd also like to give my appreciation and recognition to many families and staff that sent emails over the last 24 hours discussing and these issues and realizing what a challenge it is for the administration and the board to deal with this. We appreciate their support and I'm sure we've all read their emails. I want to reiterate and just support what Ms. Evans said, which I think is so important, is that, you know, this, we know a lot about this pandemic and there are a lot of things we probably still don't know, but one of the things that's been pretty clear is that schools in our situation that put in a return-to-learn program that had a good mitigation plan that has followed wearing masks, doing physical distancing, doing good hygiene, have done very well. And I think as Ms. Brown has spent 24 hours a day, seven days a week with contact tracing has found that we've not found transmission within the school. These are infections coming from our community into our schools. And the children have been safe, the staff have been safe. That's because of what a great job the staff has done, as Mrs. Evans has pointed out. But we're still not doing well as a community. And, you know, even sort of ignoring the holiday season, our rates continue to increase dramatically. We've increased about four times the number of cases just since October. You know, we're about to reach 300,000 deaths in the United States from this. And this is because we're not doing well as communities, working together to support our schools and our other organizations, and we really do need the village to raise these children. So, just supporting what everyone else has said. And then lastly, we all know that the people, the children who are going to suffer from this, the most are those who are most vulnerable. You know, the children with disabilities, the English learning children, the children who don't have the resources to be able to do as well as home. And I know that Lynchburg City Schools and the IT department are doing everything they can to provide them with equipment and support, and I applaud them for doing all that tremendous work. But I hope that we'll be able to address this again in the near future and talk about how we can get the kids, the children, back into school because that's where they really belong.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. And certainly, we want to observe a moment of silence and I suspect we'll do that tomorrow. Also, we do, for those persons mentioned, an individual family. At this point, I tend to concur with what I've heard. So, I would like to advance us to C2. We will have tomorrow's work session in which some discussion is already going forth with modifying that to entertain further discussion that would answer Mr. Harvey and several other Dr. Senna, et cetera, in relationship to what we've been brought, Dr. Gupta as well. And so, with that in mind, there is a recommendation before us for this week that we need to vote up or down at this time. And that is to move from, transition or shift from Phase 3 to Phase 2, remote learning for the remainder of this week. And so, the chair would like to entertain a motion so that we can then have a second, I trust, and then we can have a roll call on this vote. Is there a motion for the recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion to, that we return to a remote learning for the rest of this week in Lynchburg City Schools.
I can need a second or the motion will fail for a lack of seconds.
I'll second, I'll second.
Second, Bill Evans, discussion, Susan Morrison. Ms. Morrison?
Mr., Dr. Nillis on the phone, he wanted to say something.
Sure. Dr. Nillis, go right ahead.
Okay. I do appreciate the situation. It's very dynamic. The division looks like it got hit pretty hard over the past week. It's not, I guess, looking at the cases in Lynchburg, I mean, they skyrocketed from what it was a few weeks ago. Seven-day average is up to almost 60 now per day. Before, it was in the 16 to 17 cases per day. I'm going to support this motion for the, go back to our normal learning for the rest of the week. I think it's incumbent on us and the division to plan and have the students come back on January 4th. It's clear that there are significant secondary effects on the students in terms of mental health and achievement and achievement gap of families. It's not just about us, you know? We're, I look at this as somewhat as we're running a business and, you know, we're not delivering the services that we need to. We might take a few days to kind of pause and regroup and figure out what we're going to do so we hit the ground running at the beginning of January, but, you know, the kids matter. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Nillis. I'm not sure if I heard all of what was said, but I think that we can accommodate those things going forward. Ms. Morrison, did you have any question or anything that you?
I was just trying to second the motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded to shift made by Dr. Brennan and seconded by Ms. Evans. I'm going to now ask that our board clerk would call the roll and you would say yea or yes, if you are in favor of the recommendation, or no or nay, if you are opposed to the recommendation. School Board Clerk Tina Day, go right ahead.
School Board Member Harvey?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta?
Yes, but I'm assuming they're using this week to plan for the long-term plan. So, we're taking a pause.
That is correct.
Forward to a plan, a detailed plan, what do we do going forward?
That is correct.
School Board Member Dr. Carter?
Yes, yes, and I'm assuming that we, we're continuing with services, we're continuing with the instruction. It's just going to be remote instead of remote and/or hybrid. And, but I also want us to look at the long-term and pass just next week, this week.
Can I say something else, Dr. Coleman?
If you all will, please refrain from further comments. We're on the boat now and I would like to carry the boat. Uh 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 if if you all will, please refrain from further comments. We're on the vote now, and I would like to carry the vote. And of course, as your able chair, I'd be more than delighted to hear other questions after that. Please continue the roll uh, Ms. Day, and and tell you have completed it.
School board Dr. Senna?
Yes.
School board Dr. Nellis?
Yes, yes.
School board member Ms. Evans?
Yes.
School board member Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
School board vice chair, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board chair, Dr. Coleman?
Yes. Could you uh announce the result of the vote, uh Ms. Day?
The school board is unanimous, all nine, with yes votes.
Kindly, uh now that moves us to item D for informational items, and I first would like to pause. Dr. Gupta had a concern and it might have been one of them.
Just had a question for Dr. Edwards. I'm assuming the meals for our students will continue even if you're going remote, so the meals?
Yes, yes.
Will go as planned. Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, Ms. Evans?
It's, I I'm, Belle Evans, for the record, I've got to go teach a class at 1 o'clock, so.
Okay, listen, uh Belle, tomorrow's meeting, we will uh go forward with being in-person, but we do want to extend an opportunity for those who would like to participate virtually, to please identify themselves. We will need an in-person quorum. I will be there. But if they're.
I will be there.
If there are individuals who would like to participate tomorrow uh virtually, please let us know, and we will make sure that those accommodations are made. Thank you, Ms. Evans.
I will be there in person. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any anyone desiring for virtual participation, or you can let us know later on. I see Ms. Morrison and uh and Dr. Gupta. Thank you so much for that. All right, then? Yes, Ms. Morrison, go right ahead, please.
As we are looking at the increase in COVID in our community and the impact on our schools, as we look at our long-term plan, I think we to look at extracurricular and athletic activities as well.
Yep, we will absolutely include that in the discussion, and we did when we were doing our planning as well. Thank you.
All right, we would like the public to know that we are continuing this discussion on tomorrow, and also all of our staff. Thank you for the great work that you're doing, and we know that there are probably some other concerns around uh what we've discussed, teachers and their thoughts and so forth. But uh we'll get back at this tomorrow. Thank you, Dr. Edwards and staff, for uh leading us in the way in which you have. I just would like to end recognizing that there are many who are acknowledging pathological dilemmas within our community. We realize that there are staggering increases to public health costs, drug overdoses, we understand that there are all types of abuse and spikes in crime going across the country, in our state, and locally as well. But again, we want to emphasize to each of you, what's the alternative? We are going to do everything we can to do what is right for our kids in the city of Lynchburg. We gotta get this community spread together. And remember, this is really not a debate, but a matter of us working together in the midst of our differences to provide the best education possible to our kids. I may sound preachy now as I close out, but when a car is getting ready to go over the edge of a cliff, it doesn't make any difference whether you're in the front seat, the back seat, or in the trunk. We all go down together. It's gonna take all of us to eliminate community spread, and all of us to help all of our kids succeed. A motion for adjournment is now in order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Dr. Brennan, seconded by Dr. Carter. No further uh debate or discussion on that. Meeting is adjourned. We'll see you tomorrow. Thank you.